We have set? Okay. This November 5th, 2016 meeting of the Oyster River School Board will come to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda, and there will be one change in that. The discussion of the retirement incentive is taken off because it needs further discussion with the guild, so that will not be on the agenda. So with that change, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Okay, all in favor? Raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. We move to public comment, and before we do that, could I have a show of hands how many people would like to speak? Keep your hands up, okay? One, two, six, seven, eight. I count eight, which means that we can stay with our three minutes. So, and how many would like to speak? I assume most people are here to speak on the issue of start time. How many would like to speak in favor of the change? How many would like to speak opposed? Okay. I think, I was gonna, you know, go back and forth, but I think we can, as long as Carolyn gets her turn, you know, we'll make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. So everybody has three minutes. So somebody like to get us started? Erin?
Hi, actually wrote my comments because I wanted to make sure to say everything I wanted to say. So I'm here tonight to encourage the board to please vote tonight and vote in support of delaying the start time for our middle and high schools starting fall 2017. Change is not easy to make, and I understand that this decision is controversial, but the board has all the evidence that it needs to vote and move forward with the implementation. It's a clear, well-documented, strongly recommended educational policy that we're talking about. At this point, the board's hard work over the last two years, all of the stakeholders' input, there's nothing else to learn to be able to inform this policy. With all due respect, I don't believe that our district is gonna discover some contradictory information about school start times and adolescent well-being that goes against the work of scientists, educators, practitioners at the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the National Sleep Foundation, just to name a few. I don't believe our district with more time will have information any different than all of the work already done by school boards and school districts across the U.S. who have already studied this issue and implemented later school start times. I know there's strong emotions around this issue, and I imagine it's tempting to delay a decision. I've had community members who have stopped speaking to me in public because of my advocacy around this issue. That's hard for me, but I don't feel badly about it because I know that the facts and the evidence are fully behind me. I know that implementing later school start time in our district will have a positive impact on our students because every district in the nation that has done it has had a positive impact on our students. I also know that once implemented, the overwhelming majority of parents will be happy, they won't want to return. That is what all the districts that have changed have found. Upwards of 98% of all parents report, one year later, that they are pleased with the results. I also understand that a survey of high school students was conducted, and as somebody who studies adolescents and who works with adolescents, I definitely respect and value their opinions, but I'm not sure I understand what the board would do with that data at this point in the process. Survey data will reflect misconceptions that continue to go and affect people's opinions. So for example, my seventh grade son was approached by a group of middle schoolers who said, "Is your mom the lady doing the school start time? You know if it happens, it will mess up all of our sports." So we know that that's not true, and we know that's a misconception. That's what, you know, the survey is gonna be full of people, you know, making an opinion based on misconceptions. There's also some policies that even adolescents-
Erin, I'm sorry, your time's up. The three minutes is up.
Really? Okay, and I have one last sentence, I can't finish it?
Take it, take it.
Okay, thank you. You know, we don't ask adolescents their opinions about removing sugary drinks from sodas. We don't ask them their opinions about driving restrictions that are made by public health professionals. So, you know, this is a clear policy. I want the board to vote for it, and I think you should feel really good about moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Carolyn, you could go.
I'm Carolyn Wilson. I am a senior at Oyster River High School, and I think as one of the only students here who's speaking on the negative, and I feel like my voice should be heard. I think we are making a quick fix to appease the current trend instead of looking deeper into why students aren't getting enough sleep. At the previous presentation, it was stated that this is creating an opportunity for sleep. We can create so many more opportunities for sleep than switching start times. As a district, we hold students at very high standards. We all are expected to have a job, do a sport, do an after-school activity, and finish all your homework while maintaining a high GPA. If we create more opportunities for sleep, we need to look at, oh, I'm sorry, I just read what I just read again. We are under so much pressure and stress that sleeping an hour, less than an hour more is not gonna fix that. We really need to find what's broken before we put a Band-Aid on this trend-driven issue. I would love more sleep, but the amount of change in my life would only put more stress on me. I am not opposed to change at all, but solely giving me 45 more minutes of sleep is not going to decrease the amount of stress and pressure that I'm under and the homework that I have and the expectations I have for being a student at Oyster River High School. If we really want to fix something with our school and really help our students, focus on something, focus on our mental health, focus on the stress and expectations that we are put on us. Teach us how to handle our stress. Teach us time management. Prepare us for the real world. Look at the amount of homework we have, and realize that having a high graduation rate and a high college acceptance rate comes at more than a cost that 45 minutes can fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
It's so nice to see you all, and thank you for all the hard work that you've done on this. I really do appreciate it. I know it's been a long haul. I'm very, first of all, that makes me so anxious, Carolyn-
Just say who you are, Ruth.
Okay. It makes me so anxious just hearing about, oh, Lee.
Okay.
Ruth Sample.
Yeah.
We have two kids, they go to school here. So that makes me so anxious to hear about overscheduling and the pressures that students face, and I'm sorry to hear that. And I'm also very sorry to hear that people have been giving Erin a hard time for all of her hard work and expertise on this because that really shouldn't ever happen, especially in a place like this where I think people do value, people do value knowledge and expertise. Bus schedule number six is a compromise. It's not perfect. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends starting no earlier than 8:30. You guys are considering 8:15. I could live with that. Earlier this year, I spoke with a child psychiatrist in Portsmouth, and when I said, "What do you think about a later start time, like 8:30?", and he said, "The evidence is absolutely clear, they should be starting school later." There's no disagreement about this. Children's biological clocks shift to a later schedule by the time they get to high school, so we need to make some kind of change, and I think this is a reasonable compromise. It won't solve all the problems of the pressures that students face, but I think it'll bring us in the right direction. So I do hope that you vote positively on this and make the change in the right direction. And again, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you, Ruth.
Hi there, I'm Rachel Higgins-Botham. I'm a Durham resident and a sleep physician, and I would like to support the board in voting in favor of this change in start time. I want to reiterate, the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC are very sound organizations. They guide a lot of what we do in medicine and public health and policy. Their statements are based on evidence, and I don't think we need to look further into that. Other statements the American Academy of Pediatrics makes are around bike helmets, smoking cessation, car seats, vaccination, access to early education. These are kind of basic, basic standards. They're not frivolous, and I don't think they should be ignored. I think we can, most of us in this room can probably remember being in high school and seeing a section of the commons that was dedicated to smokers. We don't see that anymore. Why did this change happen? Well, you know, people learned about bad outcomes that come with smoking. There was a cultural shift. I'm sure if they surveyed students at the time, no one would have voted to eliminate that access to smoking in school. But, you know, change happens when we learn new evidence, and I think this is another example of that. At this point, our schedule doesn't even offer the opportunity for sufficient sleep. I personally feel that this is negligent with the knowledge we have about the effects on mental health primarily as well as physical health. So change will always bring about disruption, and it will call for creativity, but I believe this community can and will rise to the occasion, and I think like other districts who have made this change, the community, and most importantly, students, will be positive about the change a year down the road. So thank you for your consideration. I hope you vote in favor for this.
Thank you, Rachel.
Spell my name. H-I-G, Rachel, and then H-I-G-G-I-N-B-O-T-H-A-M.
Wow, good mic. Thanks for all the hard work. I know you're trying to hear every-
You're Julie Haynes.
I'm sorry. I'm so tired. Julie Haynes, and I'm in Durham, and I used to be in Lee. I love this school district. I think it rocks. I do feel like, you know, I've been sweet in the past, feeling really grouchy tonight, so I'm sorry, but like, I feel like, what are we waiting for, kind of thing? Like, are we waiting for someone driving, a distracted driver, to like, kill a beloved kid in the town and be like, "Well, the CDC recommended that, you know, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics know that these kids behind the wheel need to be getting more sleep"? And the, the argument about, you know, creating sleep opportunities that was mentioned earlier, do we all have access to the same science? We do. There's a specific rhythm that has changed. It's not about, it's a specific time of day that needs to be honored. Are we not paying attention to addiction of stimulants of, you know, I'm like, who's not getting the memo because bad things can happen? It's like, what if minds had casts on them? What if minds had a cast, right? For people with anxiety or depression or other things that can come up from this? We would all see a cast. Everybody would have a cast. But we don't wear casts on our brain. Broken arms? What if everybody got a broken arm because they were sleep deprived? We would all look at it and go, "Oh, man, that's too bad." So I really, really feel like, if we don't act, and actually, it's like, why not do it right? Why not build, we're building something new, right? Why not build the house properly? We've learned what the code is. Somebody goes, "Hey, this is a safe code for kids. This code is safe." And then we're gonna say, "Actually, we're gonna miss that target." The American of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Pediatrics gave us a target, and we're gonna say, "No, they don't know what they're talking about. We want to survey the students." Yes, get their opinion, but their frontal lobes are not developed yet, and more science. So I'm trying to listen, I'm trying to be a good neighbor, but I think, I think we're missing the big picture if we don't act. So it's kind of like telling me-
Julie, your time's up, I'm sorry.
Okay, but if my pediatrician, last sentence, says to my child, "You need this amount of sleep, and you need it this time of day," and I have to look him in the eye and say, "No, my school won't let me do that."
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. I often find myself here at this podium, giving my two cents. This time, it's really personal. It's about my kids. I'm not really here for the district as a whole. My kids are truly suffering with sleep problems. I have a sixth grader and a ninth grader. The sixth grader goes around saying he's nocturnal and often doesn't go to bed till way too late, despite our efforts, and then it's very difficult to get him up around six in the morning. I personally try to avoid it, but Ruth is handling it, and I hear the crying and the complaining and the basically awful mornings, and it's just an awful start to the day. My daughter generally comes home from school and, unless there's something going on, will crash immediately, and then her schedule will be, sleep schedule will be screwed up for the, for the rest of the day and, you know, pretty much forever. So I'm really, we're suffering, and I really hope you guys can see your way to passing this policy. Thanks.
Next, Dean.
Hi, excuse me. My name's Tom Weber. I live in Durham. I have young kids. I have a kid in third grade and a, and a child that will be in first grade next year. So I really appreciate all the work. You guys have clearly done a lot of work with a lot of help, I think, from, from many of the people in our community. I think we're fortunate to have the experts we have in our community. I think you've also, I sat at the last school board meeting and this one as well, and heard you guys listen attentively and seriously to a lot of personal experiences and personal opinions about this, and I, it seems to me they've come from the distribution of places you might expect since everyone has made a little bit differently and has a little different experience with their own sleep. And I think it must be really challenging to try to sort out objectively from all of those what it is that you should do. But fortunately, I think that you all and we all have the luxury of being able to stand on science in this, in this regard, and I think the science is certainly clear, and I think that it's, it's that body of science that represents us as a, as a whole. You can never expect to be able to gather everyone's personal experiences, certainly for those like myself whose kids haven't reached that age when things are gonna change yet, so our experiences are still to come. But like I said, we have the luxury of standing on, on, on the science, which is very clear in this regard in support of a later start time, and I just want to encourage you guys to, to vote to get this, to get this done after all your hard work and after all the hard work of the people in our community, and I urge you to vote in favor of the later start time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, morning, or hi, everybody. See, I'm, I'm tired, I'm sleep deprived. I'm Katie McManus. I am a mom of six kids, so I, of all people, know about scheduling crises and problems, and it's a constant juggle. And I don't even work yet, so. My daughter Kayla wrote a letter to the board, and I had nothing to do with this. Her teacher helped her, so this is coming from her, and a seventh grade teacher?
Six.
Or sixth grade, sixth grade, sixth grade teacher. She's in seventh grade, just so everybody knows. Okay. Well-
Can you move the mic down so we-
A lot of kids at my school agree with this topic that we should make later school start times, and I think it's good if we do because a lot of kids at my school drink coffee, and they all say that they like, can't live without it, and I don't think it's very good for them, which is kind of a known fact, and I also want to talk about how it's very important for new drivers and drivers in general, because here's a fact that I learned. It's that over a thousand, there are over a thousand car crashes each year because of drivers being sleep deprived, which I think is really big, and I feel like we should do something about it. Here's another fact from the National Sleep Foundation, and only 15% of students get eight and a half hours of sleep at night, on a school night in specific, and I think that's not very good for everyone in general. And it probably isn't best for them also because they can't think as easily without getting enough sleep, and that probably means they aren't getting very good grades, and that leads to not getting into good college, which means that America as like, a whole, like, we are the future, so we need to treat them well and make sure that they're getting good rest.
I just wanted to, I just also wanted to say something. I saw, I read that there was a student survey going around, and I really wish I could have known the kind of questions that were on the survey, because I think that's great, and I think my kids say, "Mom, what, you think kids don't have a voice?" And I said, "No, that's not it at all." But when you're sick, I don't ask you, you know, if you want to take the medicine, I make you take it, but before I do that, I ask you why you're sick. So things like, how many high schooler here are tired, you know, in the morning, or struggle through first period class? I'm almost done, I know, I see that. So, so those are the kind of questions I think would be really important, and I do think that kids kind of have a routine, and they'll fall asleep, that's what the rhythms show. So anyways, thank you guys so much, and I think you guys are all awesome, and this community is great, and whatever happens, you will make it work because you rock, okay? Thanks.
My name's Brian Kavanaugh. I live in Durham. I hope you will approve tonight the change in the start time. I just want to say one thing about the sleep cycle shift. It is a scientific fact. It's also a fact of nature. It's a part of the normal human developmental process, and I hope that tonight we can change the start time so that we can accommodate Mother Nature. To do otherwise, basically what we're doing is we're picking a fight with Mother Nature. This is not a good thing to do. So I hope that you will approve the start time change. And also, one, one more thing before I lose my voice here. You know, I've been thinking about what Carolyn had to say, and even though I disagree with her, I think, you know, she brought up a lot of good points that I think the board and members of the community could think about in the future, hopefully, and maybe do something about. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Lyon from Lee. It's been a long two and a half years of working on this with you all. I really appreciate all the time and effort and listening. You've reached out to everybody to listen, and I really appreciate that. It started in spring of 2014. We met with a working group that included Jay Richard, principal of the middle school, and then Principal Allen, and they worked with us for a year with, with their support. We came up with a lot of great information. It was carried on by Dr. Morse, who's done an amazing job with these hours of work coming up with plans that could work for everyone in whatever way you wanted to go. So thankful for all of that. You've heard this a lot tonight, but I printed it out. This is a list of the national organizations that have recommended this. I won't read it to you, but we've got educational, medical, psychological, sleep foundations, pediatric volumes of people making the same recommendation. They've got your back on this. And we started this with the question, how can we help our students who are sleep deprived? And I feel like if this data and this science is good enough for all of these organizations, why isn't it good enough for our district? I think it should be, and it is. And if we can't vote to meet these needs, it's either naive, thinking that our students are somehow exempt, or exceptional so much that they won't suffer the effects of sleep deprivation, or it's negligent because it will keep us from creating a school policy for their health and well-being. I hope you'll vote yes tonight, and I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Barbara Mayacker from Lee, mother of four, Mastway, the middle school and the high school. I went through all those myself. Honestly, I'm against this. If my children walk in the door after school and they get a snack and go to do their homework, and their homework isn't done until 10, 11, 12, now you're gonna set the clock back? And what time is that, having their homework done? That much later, they're not gonna get any more sleep, and it's also gonna be cutting in on our family time at night you're starting. That much later, if their homework's done, they want to go do something else or spend time with the family, it's that much later at night that all this is starting. And I think you made great points, you know, and I know a lot of people are for this, but you've got to think of all the other things. Homework is a huge thing. There are times, there is way too much homework, and that's cutting into kids being able to go to sleep. You know, there, there's other things, and I think you, I know you've done a lot of work on it, but I think you're also forgetting, you know, family's gotta come into play, and you're cutting into that time. We all survived being at school at 7:30, you know? Every, everybody, every child is different, and I understand that. And whether it's how you manage your time as a family is a big part of it, too. There are plenty of times, I, I work with children, so I understand you put a kid down for a nap, some are gonna go right for the nap, some are gonna fight it and stay awake. You know, it, it's the same thing at home at nighttime. So I don't think the start time later, I don't think is gonna change anything. For my kids, it's gonna make it worse, because they're, they're gonna be up later doing homework, it's gonna set everything back that 45 minutes, an hour. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have time for maybe two more speakers.
And I generally don't like to speak because of my accent, and I'm not very fluent in English, but I'll try. I want to share my, oh, sorry. My name is Christine Oliak, and I live in Durham. My last daughter is in this school, ninth grade. I wanted to share with you the experience we have in France, because we start school much later. We start at the elementary school, we start at nine o'clock, and about eight, 8:30 for the high school. And we have the same problem about the sleep deprivation. It means that I heard you, all of you, and I agree that sleep deprivation is a big problem, and that we have to do something for that. But I also heard Carolyn and the last speaker also, it's obvious to me that if we start later in the morning, we are going, we have the same amount of things to do in a day, so it's obvious that we are going to finish later also. But I think that during the winter, when you have to get up early and that it's still dark, it's not, it's very, it's getting very tough to get up. So I think that 30 minutes later would be a good option. But I wanted just to, I just wanted to point out that even starting later- But I wanted just to, I, I just wanted to point out that even starting later, in another country, we have the same problem. Thank you.
One more speaker?
Um, I wanted to thank you all for all your hard work and effort to help improve the wellness and performance of our, um, school district students. Um, you guys have been working for a very long time on this. You've done all the research, the data, and the information about the school start time. And the bottom line is that the current start times are scheduled during the typical adolescent sleep time. You, the school board, are the ones to help make that change. You're the ones that set the start times, and so it's up to you to help fix this problem. Please do not be swayed from the real issue here, um, by each individuals, by each family's individual student's sleep schedule. The decision is much bigger than that. It's much bigger than any one or dozen families, and it's going to affect generations to come in a positive way. Please know that there are many parents in the district that support this later start time and will back your decision. Uh, the proposal that you have recommended would work well for our district. Um, it's, the proposed start time would give our students a more developmentally appropriate start time, without being so different that it would be too hard to adopt. So please vote tonight for this sound policy of a later start time to help meet the physical needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to draw the public comment to a close now, and I'd just like to thank the speakers tonight, the letter writers, the speakers at the public forum. It's been, I think, fantastic and insightful, um, commentary on, on this, uh, an input on this decision they're going to make. So I'd just like to thank everybody. It's been, you know, at, at a time when civic discourse has kind of not been what it should be, I think we've really had civic discourse and good debates and a good discussion. So thank you all. Just to move out to, uh, the other things we need to do, approval of minutes, could I, Denise?
I motion to approve the October 19th regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Al. Are there corrections? Sarah?
On page one, um, under the public comments section, where Dean's comment is, um, at the end, he would like to see the start time at 8:30. He suggested adding a few days to the school calendar and shortening the school day by 15 minutes. That was inaccurate. He, um, he suggested adding a few days to the school calendar to offset the 15 minutes that will be lost each day.
That's, that's correct, right?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then on page two, under the superintendent's report, the second paragraph there where it says, um, it starts with "they just presented to the Durham Council, Town Council." I thought, was it, was it you and other people, or was it just you? Okay, so I thought if we could change that to "Dr. Morse presented district news and updates to the Durham Town Council." The way that it read, I thought that it, he was presenting to them about the start time. Um, and that is not accurate, if I'm right. It was just more about news and updates.
So do you have, do you have that?
No, thank you.
Okay. I, I had, gee, I'm sorry, you done, Sarah?
I'm not, but go ahead.
No, go ahead. No, I know, I know, I know, slow your momentum, go ahead.
Um, okay, on page six, uh, Cory's, Cory's statement, uh, Athletic Director Cory Parker discussed that they would try to accommodate a later bus time whenever possible. And I don't know, Cory, is that a reflection of what you said? I, I'm struggling to understand what that meant. So that you guys would accommodate a late, that you would accommodate the later start time, or you would?
No, I think, when we're living, we have a lot of information. We have a lot of 2:45 buses now, because we have a 2:30 departure time of school.
So late athletic depart, like athletic bus start time?
I'm sorry, Cory, you got?
Okay, so.
Could just come up and just explain that, so, yeah.
So I would love then, if that, if it's the athletic, then I would just love to throw in athletic before we say bus time, because I was trying to figure out how it related to regular buses.
Yeah, so athletic specific, not speaking on behalf of Ms. Hupp.
Okay.
Okay. Sarah, more?
Uh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. I had one. Um, on, uh, let's see, page three, um, when Kenny abstains from the, uh, approval of the substitutes, the motion passed one, six, one, zero, with Kenny robbing, abstaining. Shouldn't that be six, zero, one? Because the abstention is, it's, it's for against an abstention, so. So it should read, um, motion passed six, zero, one. Okay? Are there cha, other changes?
Sorry. Uh, on page six, again, under Suzanne's comment, right under Cory's, uh, says, "High School Principal Suzanne Filippone addressed the impact of homework on students' sleep," I believe, "not with a proposed start time." Okay, so on students' sleep. And she mentioned some options that they are brainstorming, such as a possible flex block at the end of the day to reduce missed academic time by athletes. Would that be, would that be what your intention was there?
Yes, that's one of the things we've discussed, is adding a flex block at the end of the day to help with homework as well as with dismissals.
Okay.
That would be for everybody.
So, okay. So she mentioned some options that they are brainstorming about a pox, possible, how about we just leave it at that, about a possible flex block at the end of the day? Uh, I, I still want to change it to impact of homework on students' sleep. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Others? Yeah? Just one really minor one that I just noticed. Um, page two, uh, first paragraph, the winners of the Citizen Award. I figure we should probably spell their last names right, and I happen to notice Ben Butteau is B-U-T-E-A-U. Okay, others? Okay. With those changes, all those in favor approving the minutes, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district?
Jay Rashard, the principal of the middle school, and I'll try to be quick, but I have some people upset with me if I make these announcements. First, it's hard to believe at the end of quarter three, I mean, our quarter one is actually this Friday, so quarter two starts next week, so parents can be looking for our progress report shortly after, over the next several days. My world language staff are holding a visitation at our school in January, where they do the OWL program, what is organic world language. Uh, if you ever have the opportunity to check it out as a school member, uh, always feel welcome, essentially what the kids and teachers do, is they teach the lang, in the language the entire class, particularly in eighth grade. Uh, I tell you, as a principal, when I go in to visit, it's, I don't know what's going really on sometimes, uh, but they do a great job, and the kids are really engaged, uh, in the language. Uh, we're holding a school dance this Friday, so if you want to get rid of your seventh or eighth grader, uh, to me, from six to eight on Friday, uh, please feel free to do so. What we're doing with the proceeds is to raise funds for our cafeteria fund up at the main office. What we do is, when students don't have money for lunch, they come up to the main office, we lend them money so every kid can eat. Uh, but one of the realities is, is we're currently, we have no funds left, because no one pays us back. So, uh, that's what we're doing on Friday, is to, uh, raise those funds. And lastly, uh, just a quick sports note, our cross-country teams did a great job this year, as well as the rest of our fall sports, but, uh, girls came in third place in states, and the boys came in, uh, first place in the state, which is very exciting, and that's the first time that's happened in 20 years. And just to age a couple of my friends, uh, John Parsons and Todd Allen were the coaches 20 years ago. So, thank you.
I'd just like to make a few brief announcements about the high school. To follow up with the Change Direction Campaign, we have a few students that are working with the counseling office, um, and they are brainstorming ideas and ways that we can continue to work on that throughout the school. We also had a blood drive today. We have a large group of students that have, um, joined the Red Cross Club, and they put on a very successful blood drive today. And World Language Day is November 9th, um, it's at six o'clock, and the showing of Screen Aegis is also November 9th, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout for both of those.
Thank you.
Hi, Cory Parker, Athletic Director. Couple of quick, um, accomplishments in the athletic world. Obviously, the middle school one's magnificent, uh, magnificent. Patrick O'Brien, our cross-country runner, defended his Division II title, running a time of 15:24 at Dairy Field last weekend. Uh, he broke the Division II mark of that race, so it's really phenomenal. Danielle Slaven finished second in the girls' race, and so both teams and the individuals qualified for the meet of champions this weekend down in Nashua, starting at 2:30. And the girls' soccer team is in the state semifinals again tomorrow night. Uh, we're taking on Hanover at Cello Stadium in Nashua at 6:00 PM. Thanks.
Thanks. Others? Okay, announcements, accommodations, and comments from the board. Denise?
Um, I would like to commend Meredith Freeman-Capo, who is the theater arts, um, teacher at the high school, and the students who performed in the play Women at War this past weekend, which was absolutely amazing, very difficult, um, subject matter, and I was just blown away, uh, by the performance, and I just, um, you know, the fall play is always, um, it's something I look forward to, is, you know, they, not afraid to kind of tackle some, some tough subjects, and, and they do a really nice job.
Thank you. Others? Yeah, I just have a couple. Mike Anderson gave a presentation last night on, on making, creating a school choice, and how we do that, and he was, I think, just superb, and I think we're so lucky to have him in the district and working with our school system. Also, the National Assessment of Educational Progress came out with the, uh, science performance just a couple days ago. And it's interesting that New Hampshire was first in the fourth grade and, and second, and of all the states, first of all states in, in fourth grade, and second in eighth grade, of all, which I think is an amazing accomplishment for the state. And when we often look at our results compared to the state results, how much higher we are from the state results, I think it's important to realize what that level is. At that level is the highest performing state, or one of the highest performing states in the country, so I just want to make that comment. Others? Okay. Um, district reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Actually, stole one of my things there, Tom. Yeah, the NAEP, the NAEP score was, was quite exciting to see that. Uh, and for those of you who don't know, NAEP is like often referred to as the, the nation's report card, and when you, uh, hear about international research or national research comparing school performance, uh, oftentimes NAEP is the test score they use to say that we score, uh, compared to Finland or Singapore, or whatever. Often, that's where it's used. And certainly having, uh, fourth graders in the state, being the top state in the country, and, uh, of eighth graders being second, um, that caused me, because, uh, yesterday, all of the state, uh, assessment data came out formally, so it did cause me to, to, to stop and take a close look at our science scores and kind of see where we stood in that. And it is, uh, really exciting to see that pretty much across the board, on the, uh, science kneecap, we scored 25 to 50% more students in that three to four, um, proficient level than the state. And so you combine that with the fact that, I, I was telling you about the, uh, science reasoning subtest score on the SAT, which we scored extremely high on. You know, you can sort of take a look at, New Hampshire is one of the highest scoring states, and Oyster River is one of the highest scoring schools in one of the highest scoring states. So when you get into making these comparisons about, gee, look how Finland is doing, or look how Singapore is doing, uh, you know, if, if, uh, New Hampshire were a country, we'd be doing as, as well as Singapore or Finland, and if Oyster River were a country, we'd be really not. Um, so anyway, very exciting news, uh, and, uh, there's a whole bunch of other assessment data that has now just been released, uh, literally yesterday, and I will be culling through it with teachers, and I'll be back to report in much more detail coming up. On the subject of science, uh, tomorrow, the State Board of Education is, is holding, um, their, their monthly meeting, and they're hearing a report on science standards in the state of New Hampshire. Barb Hopkins, who's the new, uh, head of science for the state of New Hampshire, who was a former Oyster River High School science teacher, uh, asked me if I would, uh, come to the meeting and, and say a few words about encouraging, um, the movement towards next generation science standards, because obviously, as a district, we have already made the move. We're already heading down that road. We're three years into it at the middle and high school, and we're really at the front edge of that with the, uh, the K-4 level. Um, but that, that is certainly the direction that the state is going at. While I'm there, I'm also going to make a case for why they should move away from the science kneecap. I think it's, I think we're preaching to the choir here, but the science kneecap measures standards that we don't teach to anymore. So, in spite of that, our kids do very well on it, by the way. I just want to, want to point that out. And then last, last thing I wanted to mention is, we do have a professional development day coming up, uh, uh, next Tuesday. It also happens to be Election Day. Um, I won't even get into Election Day, because that's, that's, you know, a whole story in itself, but we have a lot of good stuff going on in the district. Uh, at the elementary schools, they're spending the morning on next-gen science standards, kind of beginning the dialogue around reviewing where we're at and what, what our needs are professional development-wise, so that we can be ready to really, uh, dive into that review process. The afternoon, they're spending, working on the social-emotional learning goals that, uh, of the strategic plan, doing some planning around that, and, and work at building levels. At the middle school, they're doing competency work all morning, and at the high school, we're, they're doing knee ask work all morning. And in the afternoon, middle and high school are gathering together at the middle school to have, um, content department meetings, uh, grades five through 12, to really have some of the conversations about the continuity that we want to have in the district. So very, hopefully it'll be a very productive day. Uh, and, uh, again, I won't say anything about the election. Thank you.
Or the World Series.
I was wondering what, if that's when you mentioned maybe making our community its own nation.
Oh, that's, that's a good thought.
Let's, let's not go there, okay? Uh, Superintendent, Superintendent's report?
Uh, I also want to be quick. I do want to point out, um, that the board had asked me to put together a superintendent's newsletter. This is the draft of that newsletter. It's basically a compilation of all the articles that either I've written to the board, or that have been written about us, uh, this fall in the, uh, in the paper. And so I'm excited to finally get, uh, get that work done. Kudos to Lorette Ramsdale and Wendy, my administrative assistant, for their help in putting this all together. You'd notice that the last article isn't written, because it's dependent on the vote tonight, and so, uh, once, uh, once we have a vote tonight, we'll know how to write the last article, and we'll be able to distribute it. We'll be distributing it electronically. Uh, we'll put hard copies at all the town offices, we'll do the, uh, Friday update, the eCryer, um, hard copies at the town offices, and, um, we'll put some hard copies in various, uh, score, stores around the district, just because not everybody has accessibility through Friday update. So, I'm, I'm really excited about that. Uh, the next issue that I want to share with you is, the transgender policy comes up again. Um, Jason Baker, the school counselor at the high school, who worked, uh, so closely with, uh, the transgender community, as well as our district and myself, we are going to be doing a presentation at the first New Hampshire, uh, transgender workshop on November 19th, on how one family influenced the development of a state-of-the-art policy, and how that policy has impacted states like Florida, Vermont, New Hampshire, Ohio, and Virginia. So, again, you know, we were at the front end of a very current issue related to the trans, transgender community and, and nondiscrimination in schools, and that work has actually played out nationally. So, kudos to our district for that work.
That's it. Business administrator?
Good evening. I've provided you with a first look at the current year's budget, status of the current year's budget. Um, it includes salaries and contracts that we know of, that have been encumbered. The big balance in the teacher account is mainly coaches that we haven't hired yet. Um, just gives you an idea of where we are. It's early, um, but just so you know, we're in good shape. Questions?
Nope. It's done.
Good enough. Thanks.
Student center report?
To keep it brief here, a group of Northern Irish students are coming over as part of the Friends Forever organization, and they are coming to the building tomorrow. So a group of senior senators and I are going to help tour them, show them the school, have them sit in with some classrooms, just get the experience of what we have here at Oyster River. And then, at the end of the day tomorrow, the Citizens Ed Elections Edition class is putting on a rally where one class is for one candidate, one class is for the other. They have a rally, and then there's a mock election. So the Irish students will be attending that meeting and, or that rally, and those two things will come together, and we'll have a day of it, so.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, we move down to discussion items. We need to begin the process of the superintendent's evaluation. And if it's agreeable to the board, I would like to ask Jim to, the typical first step is for Dr. Morse to write a self-evaluation, and that's the first step. And then we go into a non-public session and talk about, you know, our own evaluation. So I'm wondering if we could ask Dr. Morse to provide that to us for the December 7th meeting? Okay?
Can I ask a question? Didn't two of you guys go to a workshop on superintendent evaluation?
Yeah.
And was that the process and procedure that was suggested, or?
There were a lot of, there are a lot of things suggested.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of meeting a doctoral student who was working on superintendent evaluation formats across the state of New Hampshire. And she had about eight that she was looking at in depth. And what she shared with me is she's not seen one as comprehensive as the one that we do, based on not just my performance, but on our performance towards the strategic plan and the district goals. And so just as a comment, as Tom said, it'll, you know, there'll be as many different processes in the state as there are superintendents. But this particular doctoral student who was doing this work in depth felt that the one that Oyster River was doing was one of the best she's seen.
So some of the things are discussed. I mean, not to go into detail about that, but, you know, periodic evaluations were, which seemed really kind of cumbersome, where you might do something every three months, every six months. And, you know, I'm personally not interested in going in that direction, you know. So I think if we want to like revamp our evaluation, we probably should do that in another cycle than this. So maybe at the end of this cycle, we'd say, is this the way we want to go? You know, because I think we'll follow pretty much the cycle we've done before. So is it all right if we start the process on the 7th? Just because it's Pearl Harbor Day, they'll get... Okay. Okay, so that's tuition rate. Sue?
So every year, we set our tuition rate to provide to the Town of Durham for the Forest Park students, and a rate for anyone who attends Oyster River and pays the full cost. So I'm recommending the elementary would be set at $16,920, the middle school $17,969, and the high school at $18,071.
Okay.
Questions?
How many students do we have from Forest Park?
Forest Park, yeah. Good question. I reached out today, and I didn't get the numbers from Mast Way, but we only have one at the middle school that I know of, but there are some at Mast Way, so I can get that too at the next meeting.
I have a question, and I hope I'm being accurate, but the Forest Park tuition rate is handled through a contract between UNH and the Town of Durham.
Correct.
And the cycle was a 10-year contract, which came up for renewal last year. And in those negotiations, we made significant changes to the contract. And it's based on the formula that if a child is in Durham, half of the formula comes from assessment of each town, and the other half is dependent on enrollment from those towns. So you paying, you know, so Durham child increases what is levied to Durham through our tax rates. And so we changed the contract so that with UNH, we were going to work what the formula was based on no UNH kids, and then adding the UNH kids, because that would really reflect the impact it was having on Durham, and that delta was going to be what the rate was. So I think this is the way we used to do it, but I don't know if that's current with what that contract is now.
Usually, the town reaches out to us and just asks us for this rate, and we haven't heard from them. We just, this time of the year, we calculate it, so I haven't heard.
So could I ask, and I might be misrepresenting, could I ask that we put this on hold to clarify the issue?
Well, it's, the rate's going to be the rate no matter what. So this rate will be what we would charge an individual coming in and tuitioning in. So that's that rate. But then if I need to recalculate for the purposes of that issue with Forest Park, that could be a whole, that's a whole different issue. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
But that was the point of the negotiation we did with UNH.
Okay.
Was that Durham shouldn't bear the cost of the UNH kids unfair, that cost shouldn't be leveled out because of Lee and Maberry. UNH should be paying what that true cost was to Durham of having those extra children.
Okay.
So would that affect this number?
No, it would not.
Okay, so you could approve this number, and then that could be a somewhat separate issue?
Separate issue. I'll check into that.
Is that right, Kenny?
Yes, that's fine.
Could I have a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, Al?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed tuition rate for the elementary at $16,920, the middle school at $17,969, and the high school at $18,071.
Okay, moved by Al, is her second. Seconded by Denise. Further discussion on this, further questions for Sue? No? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. That tuition is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, I'd like to move into the issue of start time. I know we have the issue of the coach, but why don't we, it's a little bit out of order. Why don't we approve the coaches, and then move into start time? Is that all right? Because, Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oyster River High School and Oyster River Middle School coaches and volunteers.
Moved by Al, is her second. Seconded by Dan. Is there a question on this? And all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, I'm wondering if we can move, I've gotten a little bit out of order, but if we can move to, Troy, you're kind of giving a summary of what you've learned from the survey of the high school students. And I know, I know they have a lot of data, but I think I'm going to ask you to kind of crystallize what you learned, and then we'll move into the decision we have to make tonight.
Okay, so to start with the survey, so the students were presented a presentation that gave them as much information as pretty much we had, so they were able to make an educated vote. And that's why I don't think we should discount the vote, because I understand that we're students. But we had all of the information that was necessary. They were presented the science, they were presented the plans, and that is what they made their decision based off of, and how it would affect their day-to-day lives. So that was to limit misconceptions to the best of our ability. And what we ended up getting was pretty much a 50-50 split. So I don't think that that should be discounted in saying, well, students just didn't know the science. There were several cited scientific organizations in the presentation, and students were strictly talking about how they thought that it would affect their day-to-day life. So you were given a copy of the questions, where the students were presented a required question, where they were supposed to rank how, what percentage in favor they were of late start, 0% in favor, against it, and 100% for it. And we got a lot of zeros and a lot of 100s. So, I mean, that's kind of what we were expecting. We were hoping that there would be one side or the other. The average value ended up coming out to a 48, which is very close to 50-50 splits. So not a huge amount we can take from that, but just that students don't unanimously want this necessarily. And then the second two questions were optional, and those were a concern that you may have about late start and what you like about late start. And we almost had 100% participation in those questions, which was great, because it showed that the students were engaged, students definitely had an opinion. Some abused the animosity of it, but other than that, it was very helpful, I guess, to see what students were concerned about. And we saw a lot of what the community was concerned about. I saw from what I assume is underclass that don't necessarily drive this concern about busing. Students, for their sake or for the elementary school kids' sake, are not a huge fan of the single-run system. Bus time, how long they're going to be on the bus, how crowded the bus is going to be, were all concerns. Sports were concerns, which we expected. And just, I think what should be taken from this is it's not, it's not a cut-and-dry situation here. Students don't necessarily, I mean, I think if you polled the building and said, are you tired? A lot of students would say it. But I think a lot of what Caroline said in her public comment was true, in that it's not necessarily the start time that's going to make a change. And I think that that's kind of what I want to present to the board, is start time is not the end-all, be-all, and we can do whatever we want. But if you said to me, where does your stress from? It's not from, I'm sleep deprived and general anxiety, which I get that that magnifies things, but it's from the commitment that I have to certain things. And I think that that's always going to be an issue across the board. And maybe, I get that it's really tough to do, but if we look at the school day, that's something that I would be interested in. I just, I'm a little bit hesitant, just because it's not a cut-and-dry issue to jump into this. And I really, I do understand the science. I do know that that's a thing that happens, and that our sleep schedules are not quite there. But I just, I don't know. It's just a tough issue, and I think we all know that. So if you guys have any questions about the survey, or what I saw, what I've been talking to students in the board, or in the board, in the halls, then by all means, so.
Can I ask you a question? In all that I've heard, I haven't heard very many people say 7:30 is the ideal start time.
Right. Yeah.
What I heard, so the whole issue of start time in the community is really about end time.
Right, absolutely.
And is that, is that your sense that, you know, if you said, if you ask the students, and I know this, I'm just asking, you know, is 7:30 an ideal start time?
No.
But they don't want the day to end later? The extension of the day is more what concerns them than the start. Is that right?
Yes. If the school day ended at 2:30 and school started at 8:15, I thought, I would think that this would be at 100% in favor across the board. So it is that. And if we can make time in the schedule, I understand that it's tricky, and I understand that that's a massive project to look at. But there's a lot of, we have a tradition of going above and beyond in everything. And if that's in our credit load that students take, if that's in our hours we're in school, I think there's time that could be made up if we really wanted to. Maybe that would help with the issue. So I think that that, yeah.
Great. Any questions for Troy? Dan, and then?
And Troy, first of all, thank you to you and the student center for doing this. I was really impressed with the way you put together a lot of the information. I think it was a great exercise for our students to be a part of. I hope we do something like this more frequently as a process issue. But just for the sake of clarity, your, it sounded like your final thoughts, you had described the survey and the results. Were you, were you trying to articulate the results of the survey? Or maybe it sounded like you were sort of sharing your own thoughts on the issue?
Yeah.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, so I started by talking about the survey itself, and then I think I sort of transferred into my own thoughts on it. There were definitely a lot of people with concerns, and those were some of the things that I mentioned with the busing, sports, just, there were a lot of concerns that were presented in those massive packets that I handed out. And then I transferred into kind of what my thoughts on it were, what I've heard from the pulse of the building, what my personal thoughts are, so.
Denise, then, sir?
Mine is just to say a huge thank you. I, you know, this was a lot of work in a short period of time to compile, I mean, and the percentage that participated was huge, which is amazing for a survey. So thanks for that hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I think the valuable piece of this, to me, is that regardless of which way we go, I think the feedback in these comment sections would hopefully allow us to mitigate some of the issues that are going to come up. And I think, to me, that's the takeaway from these. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there other questions for Troy? Again, thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome.
A lot of work.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we move to the actual issue of start time. And Dr. Morse's memo to us indicates, and I think you can, that if we're going to make a change for next year, we're at kind of the point in time where we need to make that decision. Is that correct?
Yeah, largely, the decision being made now provides several layers of the organization to be ready. The most difficult level would be transportation, the intricacies that Lisa Huppi, our transportation director, will have to go through in terms of model after model after model. She needs those months to do that. And then the secondary level would be the high school master schedule and the middle school master schedule, because both of, both those principals will have to work diligently to get ready for the fall. The third piece would be the impact on student choice in terms of coursework at the high school, which falls on the school counseling office and Heather. So this is not a small decision. We always knew it wasn't a small decision. We knew it was a K through 12 decision. It was never a middle school, high school decision. But the, this is one of those decisions where not just the community at large is impacted, but internally, the organization has to gear up for a major change if the board decides to go forward.
Thank you. Now?
I'm going to put forward a motion, just because I think that'll hopefully get us to focus our conversation on the motion. So I'll make a motion to approve option six, I believe we called it, for the 2017, starting in the 2017, 2018 year.
Okay, for those of you that don't have those numbers down there.
Okay, so it would be, the high school and middle school would start at 8:15 and end at 3 o'clock, and the elementary schools would start at 8:45 and also end at 3 o'clock.
And include the two separate bus loops for the morning, elementary staying the same single ride?
Yes, so the morning, it's like separate single ride, and in the afternoon, it's a combined ride. It's kind of a long...
Second? Okay. Discussion? Denise?
The one thing that I would definitely want to see us support if we do this is, I really did hear the concern particularly from Barrington parents who came to the forum regarding, you know, what are we going to do? We don't have the option of putting our kids on the bus. We have to get to work. So what I am asking is that we support, we support being able to enter into the schools, and I'm talking both middle and high, because this may apply to parents in different ways in the middle school, but for those students that basically need an early drop-off. And I, we kind of talked about this a little bit with Dr. Morse, too, you know, there may be, there's probably going to be a cost involved with that, because that would involve having a staff member there, and whether that's at 7:15 or 7:30. But I definitely think that we need to be mindful of the fact that we do, we don't want to jeopardize our Barrington students who are, who are coming to us. And also, we may have students such as the swimmers and the other hockey players or whoever we've heard from that have said, you know, well, gee, we get out of practice, what are we going to do? By the time we get home, we're going to have to turn around and come back. And then the other people I've always been really concerned about, and I do want to make this in the minutes or whatever, because this is an important point, is that we have working parents that we need to think about, you know, it's not just... You know, it's not just convenience for them, it's their livelihood, you know? And they may have a need, and maybe at the middle school, it's, you know, one of the childcare programs like Growing Places or whatever takes over, having some before school for the middle school and the high school. I just think we need to have maybe available in the cafeteria and/or library, you know, something like that. And I just really want to hear from the board if they would be supportive of that, because that is going to influence whether I do vote for this or not, because I think it's important. I hear the science, I'm on board with that. But, you know, we do have to look at other factors, and we have to do what we can to mitigate problems that would come up for all our, all our community, not just, you know, one segment.
So just, what kind of support, how, what form would you want that support to take?
Well, my, in the discussion with Dr. Morse, and maybe he can speak to this, why don't you, yeah?
So Denise and I had this conversation after the presentation in the auditorium. And, you know, the issue is, you know, a fairly significant issue. We do have parents who work, who need a place to drop off their child in the morning, and currently, they can do that, and then they do that. I mean, all you have to do is go down Code Drive in the morning, and you know that they're doing that. But we also have to understand that we have, you know, we, again, I use Sarah to pick on, but she's the furthest person away from this school. And, you know, so there, there are contingencies where I think Denise's concept of covering in the morning makes a lot of sense, just because it's the reality. Otherwise, how are these kids going to get to school? You say, "Well, they can jump on the bus." And that's true, but we also have to accommodate as many people in this solution as we can, and that's been our goal from the beginning. So I do think it is a, you know, a cost situation, and on the back of the napkin, it may be a $10,000 cost if we decide to do that, and I don't think it's an unreasonable idea.
So you could build that into the budget that you're creating? Would that be agreeable, if that?
Yeah, I think Troy has something.
Yeah, that was another one of the concerns that I saw repeatedly coming up in the student survey, was just what are kids from Barrington going to do? And I think that that would help, like, get rid of that concern, I think. So that would be good to do.
Okay. Yeah?
So before we go any further with talking about the details of the potential change, I feel like it's worth, I want to try to reiterate something I said at the last meeting. And, because I think there's a lot of people here tonight, potentially watching this meeting now or later, that are sort of wondering, you know, how we view this issue. So, speaking for myself, the way I've come to see this issue is that there is relatively longstanding credible research that began over a decade ago, that has been thoroughly vetted by a large number of national organizations, well-respected organizations, that has informed us that there is a period of time during which kids sleep, adolescent kids sleep, and that our current schedule, being as early as it is, conflicts with that period of time. So I feel that the question for the board is to, number one, ask ourselves, are we comfortable, is it acceptable to have that conflict continue? And if we don't feel like it's acceptable, then what are we going to do about it? And I think that's the real, the real change. I do want to again make the point, though, because we've heard from so many folks, and by the way, very constructively, I am so appreciative of all the emails that we've been getting. The forum, again, was very constructive. I do realize it's an emotional issue, but I feel like everyone has really contributed to the process in a constructive way, and so I'm grateful for that. So with that said, I think, you know, we need to, we need to make that decision based on that sort of value judgment. I feel as though the research, the data, et cetera, if it's good enough for the American Academy of Pediatrics, I feel it's good enough for us. I do value the feedback from the students, I do value the feedback from the teachers. I would hope that we, as a board, will still keep in, keep in mind that we have a responsibility as leaders to make this decision with the information that we have. I hope this doesn't become a popularity contest. You know, I don't want to get into counting how many emails for and how many emails against. I think we have really credible science that compels us to make a decision, and I hope we can focus on that. So with that said, you know, I support Denise's concerns about working parents. I don't take lightly the impact to the community. I do support making a change. And I think Option 6 is a good compromise. It's not perfect in either, to either end of the spectrum, but with a lot of policy changes, I think that's what you shoot for, at least in the early stages.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, okay. I'd just like to echo what you've said so eloquently, Dan, that for me, I know when this came up, I thought this is going to be a tough one. It's going to be an issue that changes everybody's schedule. It affects, I can't think of any other thing we've had that affects everybody. This is, this is an issue that affects everybody. But what gradually dawned on me that I came to appreciate was, I think, when our schedule is an hour, almost an hour off, the, you know, the starting, the earliest starting time that's recommended by these organizations, we couldn't just back away from that. You know, we couldn't just say, "Oh, it's, this is too hard." And so I think we tackled it. And like you say, this is a compromise. And I think that for those who are concerned that, you know, this will harm athletics, we really, after-school things, I think that, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think also for the board, I think we are very aware of how important those after-school activities are, and essentially, what we have is a compromise that doesn't go to 3:44, 5:00 or 4:00, but that ends at 3:00. So one of the questions in my mind was, can you maintain a viable athletic program and an after-school program if you have a day that ends at 3:00? And I checked, like, Hanover High School. Now, Hanover High School, I mean, I think most athletic teams in Oyster River can say Hanover High School does pretty good in athletics. You know, they have a robust, successful athletic program. They get out at 2:55. They manage it. And I think when I went to school, we got out even later than that, we managed it. And we had band, and we had athletics. I always played sports after, at every season. So, so I think that, particularly talking to Corey, I think this is manageable. You know, maybe not ideal for everybody, I think that it's manageable. So I'm going to support this. I think we've worked hard at it, I think. And if I can make a prediction, I think that maybe seven or eight years down the road, people will be amazed that we started school at 7:30. Al?
So when people started talking about the study groups and all that being two years ago, I was like, "Oh, boy." I would tend to say personally, that's because we're very methodical and deliberate in how we approach a problem. My wife would just say it's because I'm painfully slow. But I think that it's been a really beneficial thing, because in those two years, what's occurred in the district is an increasing awareness or an increasing focus on student wellness. And we've, it's just blossomed with how we're beginning to look at how that impacts student achievement. And so I'm not under any illusion that we have a silver bullet that will, if we change the start time, it's going to solve all of our wellness issues. And I think Carolyn really brought up a lot, there's more work to be done. The homework element of it needs to be examined. Clearly, the screen time element also needs to be examined. I mean, they're all interlinked, and so it's, there's no simple solution. But that said, I think you have to make a start somewhere. We can, by shifting the start time, which is really a difficult one for many districts to tackle just because of the transportation costs, we at least start ourselves on the pathway to begin to untangle or to fix some of the other problems. And Denise, of course, pointed out one, which is just that, what do we do with people who really need a place to be at 7:30 that they can't adjust with us? And of course, I would support that. And I think that over the next few years, there's clearly going to be some evolving of our schedule to, to deal with how we do athletics and to deal with extended learning opportunities. But I think we're, we're kind of starting the pathway down to making broader changes that I think really are necessary. So I'm going to support this.
Maria?
Is it okay if I mess this up? And make an amendment to include Denise's concerns? An amendment would be to support Plan 6 and to develop and implement a plan for, before school, whatever.
Okay. Do you want to make that, do you want to make that as amendment? Or you made it as an amendment? Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm going to complicate it more. So I guess before we vote on that amendment, I would like to, I don't know, I don't know if I can do that. Can I, can we hold off on that amendment until-
No, you can have a second amendment.
Okay.
I think, I think I'd like to do one amendment at a time. You started getting an amendment tree, that becomes very difficult.
Robert's Rule is just-
Yeah, yeah.
Points it out, how to do it, but that's-
Yeah, Robert's Rule sets a thing called a Gordian knot, where, where you get so many tied up that you start over again, so I don't want to get, I don't get into that. So, I mean, it's a basic, yeah, I think that there's a general agreement in the board on that, on that issue. So I wonder if you could just vote on that amendment, and then, does your amendment have to do with hers, or?
Yeah. I mean, it has to do with the whole thing. And I think it encompasses, Maria, that's why I'd like to, before we vote on that amendment, I'd like to give my spiel so that we can then see if we need to, if we can do it more efficiently.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So I guess what I feel is that we have, with the plans that's been put before us, we've been given sort of broad strokes by the administration. I mean, you've said that time and time again, that we talk about this, you know, on that slide as an 8:15 to 3:00 time. But my concern is that if we put that language in our motion-
Can't be 8:15.
I mean, I'm in support of changing the start time. Let's all breathe deep, okay? But if we put those exact times in our motion, then you are held to those exact times. In my experience, and what I've been experiencing, we've been given broad strokes by you guys for a plan. Some of the key components of that plan are that the start time is going to be somewhere between 8:00 and 8:15, that the end time is going to be somewhere between 3:00 and 3:15, that there will be a single run bus system at the end of the day, and a double run system at the beginning of the day. And that there is a, because of, because of the uncertainties that we have, there may be a 15-minute, up to a 15-minute decrease in contact time. Not contact time necessarily, but-
School day.
Shortening the school day.
School day time.
Okay? And so I guess I would like to make the motion-
Option 6.
Broader. And, well, but even Option 6 on the sheet says that, you know, that it, that it, those are the start times. Jim made, I think verbally, that they were not, those aren't set in stone. I mean, am I right on that?
Sarah, I greatly appreciate what you're saying right now, because remember that the exercise that we spent weeks and weeks and weeks on this summer was to get to a place where we felt we could confidently say to you, "We can do this." And the parameters in Option 6 were examples not specific to, "That's what we will do." Because once Lisa gets into it, she may want to move something five minutes here or five minutes there, because it's going to make the bus system work better. So the latitude that you're suggesting is really important as we go forward and do the work that the board, if the board directs us to do it.
And then, can I, I just, I just want to finish with my, because then my other, if we could broaden it out to be like that, I guess I would also want board members to sort of say their concerns. Denise has sort of talked about one of her concerns being the before school, that early drop-off piece. I have to say, I'm, I loved the flex time discussion, and I would love to see that, you know, I'd love to see some, some work at mitigating the impact on after-school games in particular, because it's amount of academic time missed by students. That's my bigger concern. You know, I'm worried about that 15 minutes of instructional time, and even more specifically, I was looking through the minimum standards for public school approval and their layouts of, of what is required. I took a little screenshot of their page. And it talks about the, the elementary needing to maintain nine hours and 40 minutes of instructional time. So this isn't, you know, and that the high school and the middle school needs at least 990 hours of instructional time. And I want to be super clear that whatever we do with this plan keeps us in those boundaries, because I've been told that we are, instructional time-wise, we're, we fit, we fit in those boundaries, but there's not a ton of wiggle room.
Todd, could you talk about that?
Yeah, we have, currently, our schedule has 1,076 instructional hours, and we're required to have 990 at the high school, middle school. I think it's 940 at the elementary. So we're actually 86 hours above, above standard.
And that's instructional time? That's not-
Correct. That is instructional time.
Because that, because what I was-
Our, our school day is six hours and 55 minutes long, and we have five hours and 55 minutes or something like that of instructional time every day.
Okay. All right. So we're not really super, we're not very close to that?
I think there's room to maneuver things. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Just try to figure out where we are.
Well, I think, just from my sense of it, I feel that Maria's motion is a little different, and I respect everything Sarah said, and I think Sarah's points are very good, but I don't see how approving Maria's first and then let Sarah change in those terms with a second motion. They're not exclusive of each other, so.
So, so it's very possible Al can just amend his motion if the second's willing, and then you don't have to go through all those machinations.
All right. Yeah, so I was either going to withdraw or just amend. But I'll just, I'll just start over. How about if we-
You have to withdraw first.
How about I withdraw my motion so that we can just get a clean start on the motion?
So if you withdraw your motion, what happens to Maria's amendment to the motion? Does that-
We have to, can you-
Withdraw your-
Withdraw that, so that we can-
Let's start over.
Let's start over.
Okay, so, so you withdrawing your motion? Who seconded it?
And I'll withdraw my two seconds.
Maria, you going to withdraw your amendment?
Yes, yes.
Who, who? Okay, so we're back to square one now. Okay, Al?
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the concept of, of bus system or Option 6, which would be, in the morning, the high school and middle school start times are shifted later, and the elementary school remains the same, and they are on separate bus runs. And that the afternoon, they will end at the same time, and there will be a single bus run. Does that encompass it?
Yep.
And, and-
Oh, and that we add in a-
Before, before school.
Mechanism so that, that before school, that there is a place for students to go.
Develop and implement a plan.
Develop and implement a plan for a place in the schools for students to go.
Okay. Do you have all that, Laura?
And so I'll second the combination of it all.
Okay.
So although I do agree that the options were presented, and we did our workshops and discussions around the idea that there are a lot of complexities, and we have to expect adaptation, changes, tweaking, and a lot of it, I am concerned that we are opening this process, we're not being clear enough in what we want to accomplish. The ideal start time from a wellness and medical standpoint is 9:00. I don't feel that that's workable for this community, given how much goes on after school. given how much goes on after school. I am comfortable with eight fifteen, although it does not yet reach the eight thirty minimum recommendation because I feel it gets us a good way towards a better place in scheduling. My concern is that now we're being pretty vague. And that if it seems to work better doing it at eight, why are we doing this in the first place? This is a huge undertaking. And, you know, we've done a lot of work, but it's nothing compared, I think, to what the administration has already done in terms of research and putting together proposals for us. And not to mention what they have ahead of them. Not to mention the adaptations that families are going to need to make and students are going to need to make. So I guess my question is, what are we, what is this motion? Where is the line in the sand? What are we, what are we, what is this board saying we want the schedule to look like?
Denise?
So maybe this would help. Personally, I feel like three fifteen is too late. That's personally, at least for the first year. And again, this isn't, to me, this isn't the end all. I mean, there's nothing to say, we do this for a year. It's working great that we can't tweak it down the road. But for first year, I would like to say three oh five, to me, is what I'm the most, you know, I don't want to go later than that. Like, that's just, you know, all right, three, three oh five. I can go to three oh five. But I don't want to go to three fifteen. So maybe we could say no, school day end no later than as part of the motion. And then the beginning is adjusted to the best that they can, given the buses and the, you know, complexities or what have you. That's just an idea. I don't know if that would work or not.
So when you asked me my concern, my concern, what our concerns were, mine is, of course, the bus system. And I used to always worry about the air handlers on the middle school, but this is kind of up there with that now. We're revamping the entire bus route of the district. And the runtimes and all that, you know, Lisa's a genius with this. It's like, it makes me nervous how we do it. So I, the motion being vague, and I appreciate what Sarah was saying is, I mean, you know, Jim always used this term, we're approving, what are we doing? We're approving the concept or the framework of it. The ideal target that we want is, in my mind, eight fifteen to three. But, you know, I'm not trying to, I mean, I think the motion and all the work we've done, Jim understands that and Lisa understands that. And we're trying to get as close as we can to there. But I, I'm trying to give them wiggle room. And I can't think of a better way to, in the motion, to give wiggle room. So I think our intent is clear that we want to try to get as close to eight fifteen to three as possible. I guess we could amend the motion, say, we want to get as close to eight fifteen to three as possible. But I think he understands what we're trying to do.
Let's put ish on it. Three ish.
Ish.
Troy?
So just where I'm at on this, concern wise, I just, the only way I can see myself getting behind this and approve and voting for it is if we make sure that we continue the effort to look at what we're doing in this, in this topic and how our day looks. I don't want to approve it, check the box, done. That's just my concern with this is that if we approve it, then we're just going to move on. And I think a lot of, we need to look into that and keep going with that.
Yeah.
So thanks, Troy. And that has been the secondary conversation throughout the two years. You know, the start time I envision as the tip of the iceberg. Below that, right below the surface, and the one that we've heard the most about by far is homework.
Yep.
And, you know, that there is no coordinated effort at either the middle school or high school to figure out how to mitigate the issue of homework on our students because we've heard time and time and time again that we have students who are spending one, two, three, four hours on homework. Beyond that, we've already had conversations administratively about the structure of the school day itself. You know, how can that structure be changed in a way that lessens the stressors on our kids? So even as we've had every public conversation on this, and perhaps I haven't said it as strongly as I'm saying it tonight, I see this as the beginning. And I think that Al has alluded to that and other board members, this is the beginning of a much more comprehensive look at how we structure our organization to support students. Because all the feedback from students and parents is that you're all being overwhelmed, which is why.
Absolutely.
We shifted to the whole mental health issue in such a big way this year, a small way last year. And we'll continue in that endeavor through the years to come. So we have.
I think that's great.
Heard that loud and clear administratively. The high school principal and I have been in conversations. Todd and I have been in conversations. Jay and I have been in conversations. And we know that this is one step toward getting the whole job done.
Kenny?
Maybe just to back off a little bit. I thank the community for all of their input. And I agree with comments made before about how productive and constructive all the comments were. I also want to praise fellow board members because this is a really big issue in how we've been able to have these discussions and move and hear different opinions. And as a board, we've tackled some really, really big things. You know, the tuitioning, realignment of the elementary schools. Many, many issues. And hearing fellow board members speak and kind of looking at, kind of as a card game, and I think people have laid their cards down and counting votes, this will pass, and I'm glad it will pass. And because I hear it's going to pass, I'm going to vote against it. And the reason being for comments kind of like Troy and comments like Caroline is, I think we can do a lot better. And this, it took us this long to get here. And to get to somewhere else is going to be even that much harder. Change is hard for everybody. And to think that we're going to do this next year and then the year after that, we're going to flip something and do something different. I don't think that's going to happen. And so to me, to hold us to the fire is to vote against it. And just to raise some points. I, the science is totally clear. I don't dispute the science. Kids' sleep patterns change. There's also incredible science about what after school time means for kids and whether that's extracurricular activities or just being kids. That has tremendous beneficial impact. And when, maybe Troy, when you talked about how, you know, everybody would love it if we moved the start time later and we, you know, keep the end time the same. That's, obviously, that's optional. Anytime you make a choice, you pick something up, you gain somewhere. But you have to measure, weigh what you lose. We have a district with kids that have so many extracurriculars that are doing so many things. So our district is, in some ways, a little unique. If our kids were going home and playing video games or hanging out, smoking cigarettes or marijuana after school, it'd be much easier just to jump on board. But our kids are doing incredibly productive things. So I think this is incredibly important. I think a late start is incredibly important. But one of the first discussions we had at the board table, we said, why don't we look at our school day? Why can't we be creative? Why can't we have kids coming and going? We heard from the public and so much, we heard the science. But then what we heard was all anecdotal. Why don't we structure a day that not only incorporates the science, but incorporates the anecdotal? So I just throw that out there because I want us to really work at this. Work at the homework issue, work at being creative. And I see that's going to be even a bigger project than this half hour, forty-five minute change.
Okay. Sure.
I really like all of those comments that have been made. And I just thought that I'd voice it to the board that, kind of for what it's worth, I know I'm graduating this year. But I don't know, I'm glad that I'm kind of out before a decision's made just because I don't, I don't think that I would want to change personally. And what I, a lot of what I'm basing my vote on is the student body because it doesn't really affect me. And I just, I thought that I would put that out there. And I really agree with a lot of, a lot of that comment. Just that we need to keep going, so.
Maria?
Oh, just a question. After we vote on this motion, we could make another motion to develop and implement the plan for the rest of what I think of as three-legged stool, the homework situation, the stress part. And as we heard from the young lady over here, why are we drinking lots of coffee in middle school? If we're talking about sleep. We could get rid of the coffee tomorrow. So I hear what you're saying. But to vote against something that we do want, I'd rather see you make a motion right after that to continue.
And I think Dr. Moore, she talked to you before. I think that you, your intent is to go to the high school and begin to raise this issue of homework, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I would say that Suzanne and Todd have already raised the issue. But Tuesday morning, I'm with the high school staff. And these are the very issues that I had planned on raising with them. So I, my concern is that this board has been ever attentive to the greater community on all issues, including, you know, the staff. And, you know, you certainly have the authority to make a directive from this level. But that's not your usual manner of working with staff. And my issue in raising it with the staff on Tuesday is to make them aware and get them involved in a solution that they could come back to you with, rather than us saying to them, which would be contrary to all of the years I've worked with you, you do this, rather than, this is a concern, what issue? How would you, how would you come back and resolve these issues? Help us resolve these issues of stressors on our kids. So I just, I point that out would be contrary to how you usually do business. And I know the staff truly appreciates being engaged in problem solving vis a vis your past practices. And I'd hate to create a tension where the board all of a sudden says, you shall, as opposed to help us solve, you know, these issues, so.
Which is why I think I phrase the comment in the way I did is that I wanted to try to set some of the issues that we see. And I agree, I think.
And I'll be doing, I'll be doing that with the staff on Tuesday.
Right.
Is the, the whole plan was to let the staff finish the NIESC accreditation at the high school before we pivoted, as they say in the political arena. And the pivot would be to these other issues. And they be, as a staff, identify a bigger length of issues than even we've talked about at this table. Because they work on a day-to-day basis inside the environment that in some ways they created, in some ways was created for them. And so to get them into the problem-solving mode is really critical. And it's been a very successful model for the board. And that's why I say what I'm saying.
Al?
So I agree, actually. I think that, you know, I hate to bring up being slow and methodical again. But, but I think the issues are there. There needs to be some time now for staff and the teachers, the administration to begin to work together. And I think ideally, you know, as we start in the spring again on our goals, they'll have more of a comprehensive idea of how we're attacking this. And it's like, as we begin, because normally the administration comes to us and tells us, well, these are things that we're worried about. And we say, well, these are things we're worried about. We can, I think we're really coming forward, refining our wellness or mental health and all that. And I think that's the time where you'll have enough input to work on it. So I think making a spontaneous decision right now before we've thought through everything is generally not a good idea. And it's not like we're putting it off. I mean, it's been raised. It's just that it, you know, it took us two years to get to this point. It's going to take a little bit more time to actually formulate what we're going through and formulate a well-developed plan. And, I mean, this is going to be a long pathway of years that we keep working at it. So it's, it's not putting it off. It's just giving them enough time to really put together a clear pathway of where we're going, what we need. And again, I see personally, our goal setting again in the spring, that next peg, which is these other legs of this, are the things that we're going to begin to address.
Yeah?
So I agree. And I just, just for the sake of clarity, again, going back to the point about, I feel that this, the action that we're talking about now, the issue that we're talking about addressing is addressing that conflict with our schedule and the period of time during which kids sleep. So in an effort to sort of temper expectations, but more importantly, to express my desire to continue this conversation, this, I don't see this action addressing personal work habits, parenting, screen time regulation, using caffeine or other substances to stay awake. I see this only as addressing the conflict between what we know as the period of time during which kids sleep and our current schedule. With that said, I am completely committed to continuing this dialogue. I mean, I think our eyes were all opened last year when we got the results of the student survey. As high achieving as our students are, there were many indicators of anxiety, stress, and behaviors frankly, that are indicative of people who are a bit overwhelmed. And so I know I am committed, and I think the rest of this board is committed to continuing these conversations. And Troy, as you said, I do not see this as a, boy, once we get this done, we're all set. So your point is well taken. Could I just ask one more thing?
Sure.
Just for my own comfort with the motion that is currently on the table. Laura, would you mind reading that back to me?
Al Holland moved to approve the concept of option six, late start time with separate buses in the morning and a one-run bus system in the afternoon. They will also develop and implement a mechanism to allow students at the middle school and high school to be dropped off early, second by Kenny Rotner.
Okay. So I just want to go on the record as saying, my understanding of that is that the targets for the final implementation are an eight fifteen start time and a three o'clock dismissal time. Targets.
Targets. Yeah, that's a great word.
Do you want to add that as an amendment?
No. I don't think you need to.
Okay. And if anyone sees that differently, I would encourage you to correct me or share your own.
I think that's, that's accurate.
Okay.
Denise has a question about, is the elementary school current end time three o'clock?
Three ten.
Okay. So we're taking three minutes off, ten minutes off the elementary day, or?
Well, again, we have to get down to the specifics. But in that proposal, you would. But by the time that Lisa and I work through all of the bus specific to next year, it may, may not be any lost time. So we just have to, you know, get, get the buses programmed so she can see what the impact would be in getting the kids to school.
Because I think it would be, not that I don't want to complicate things, but I think that there's so much time in that day, that it's so crowded now that if we could, you know, maintain that as three ten, that would be ideal. Whether that would work out. So Denise?
Just to complicate, and again, this is just in terms of what the final, final absolute minute thing is. When we were at Mast Way, they were definitely not opposed to if school had to start a little bit earlier. So in order to keep it as a three o'clock dismissal, I don't think it would be a huge deal if it got backed up ten minutes as far as the start time. That's just a thing. But the other thing I just wanted to say is, I really appreciate, Troy, you know, all, all that you've said and what other members of the board have said. I too, I'm really glad this issue has come up, even though it took a lot of time, because it did really point out some more glaring, you know, an issue here. But the other issues that were kind of hidden underneath. And we knew they were there, but it really brought it all to the forefront. So I think that's a really good thing. I totally echo what other people have said that we need to, you know, this is a good start for one thing, and, but we need to look at everything else as well.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I think it would be good to have the motion read one more time. Laura?
Can you read it really loud, Laura? Because we have a hard time reading, hearing it over there.
Al Holland moved to approve the concept of option six, late start time with separate buses in the morning and a one-run bus system in the afternoon. They will also develop and implement a mechanism to allow students at the middle school and high school to be dropped off early, second by Kenny Rotner.
Okay. Are we all clear on the motion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor. All those opposed? Two, one opposed, and the student rep is opposed. Okay, the motion passes. Kenny?
I throw this out for conversation, and I don't know if it would be appropriate. But as we begin to tackle those next stages, those next issues, and I know Dr. Morse, you'll be doing that with your leadership team and input from faculty, would it make sense to have a board member or two involved in that process as well?
Board members welcome to be part of that process. It's going to be probably a lot of committees within the high school and middle school around scheduling, around homework and so forth. So, it's a mul, we won't address them as a singular topic.
Right.
We'll address the concepts singularly, and then we'll probably break out into subcommittees, who wants to work on scheduling, who wants to work on homework, who wants to work on organizational structure, that kind of thing.
Could maybe, maybe as, you know, when it eventually comes to your doing that, maybe we can get like a board representative to those different subcommittees to add to the dialogue?
Yeah, if the board is interested, absolutely. I think that always helps when the board acts as a springboard to communication with itself.
Right, okay.
I think that we have, just correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have done everything except for approve the policies. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. So, we have a number of policies for first read. I'm wondering whether people are comfortable in approving these as a group, or whether you want to single out some, there's a lot of stuff in here. Should we go one by one?
I want, I, I want to do the extended learning one, the big one. I'd like to do that separately, just because I have a comment to make about that one.
Okay.
And I'd like to do the graduation requirement separately.
Okay, so, extended learning, graduation. Is there any other one that would people like to pull out for separate discussion? Take a look at them? No?
So, I would move GBED, staff conduct with students, IHBI, alternative learning plan, IKAA, interdisciplinary credit toward graduation. Was it IKF you wanted to pull, Sarah?
Yeah, IKF.
ILBAA, high school graduation competencies, and IMBD for approval for first read. IMBD is high school credit for seventh and eighth grade advanced coursework.
Okay. Second, discussion?
Yeah, just a very minor correction to, it is IMBD. We need to put back "provided the" that was taken out. Let me see if I can actually find that. I wrote that that's what we need to put back in, but I didn't write. No, I'm not able to move my file. It was, it was part of what was crossed off, but the sentence doesn't, isn't complete unless you keep the words "provided the" back into it, so.
What, page are you on?
I can't.
Okay.
Are you seeing it?
Here.
Oh, okay. So, it's, "Students in seventh and eighth grade may take approved high school courses and apply the credit of those courses towards high school graduation. Provided the" needs to stay in there to be able to say, "Provided the student achieves satisfactory standards of performance." So, it's actually just the "provided" that just needs to be put back in.
Okay. Al?
I hate to wordsmith, particularly since there's a really historic event occurring right now. But, policy GBED, when you go down to number three, it says, "Using their position to manipulate students for reasons that are prohibited by law," period. And then, in that crossed-out stuff, there's like a hanger, which is "for inappropriate reasons." And it doesn't, I'm not sure how that links up. So, you guys have a little wordsmithing to do there.
I think that was supposed to come out.
That was supposed to come out. We wanted the language prohibited by law.
But this is not crossed off. You stopped crossing in "for inappropriate reasons."
I'm not finding it right now.
Where are we? So, that's just a?
Just a wordsmith. They can correct that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was looking at number seven, too.
Does somebody on the policy committee have that, so?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Right, that line should have gone through.
Yeah, either connect them or cross it, totally.
Got that.
Okay. So, with those kind of typo changes, are there, can we approve, can we vote to approve these for first read, or do people have more discussion on those? Hearing none? Okay, so just, excuse me, I scroll back up to the top. So, we have policy GBED, policy IHBI, policy IKAA, policy ILBAA, and policy IMB as a group. So, all those in favor approving those policies as a group, please raise your hand for first read. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, so we have a?
Can I add one note on that?
What?
Just GBED. Just to the administrators, if you guys could make sure that this policy is where we say it's going to be. So, if we say it's going to be in the student handbooks, can we make sure that it gets in the student handbooks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Kenny, you wanted to talk about, I think I'll, I said alternative learning plans, is that?
So, I'll move it, if there's a second, then I could discuss it. So, I move policy IHBH, extended learning opportunities, and this is for first read?
Second.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Maria. Okay, does that just say?
So, this policy, I think there was a real lot of work from the leadership team in crafting this. And it kind of, I think, moves our school forward incredibly in really recognizing that there are very valid ways that students could learn that aren't limited to the four rooms of the classroom. And currently, a lot of students are taking advantage of that concept already. A lot of students are doing V-Lax, and there are some students who are doing internships, taking courses at community college, taking courses at UNH and other activities. And we have felt, approved through our committee, that this is a very valid endeavor, and we would even like to see that extended. And really, in the language and the policy, we really talk about that these are opportunities that you cannot realize in our classrooms. They're opportunities that really need to have rigor and that have really defined goals, ways of assessing. These aren't just freebies. But this enables students to get further than they could just from our current configuration of the high school, and perhaps start college with credits, or perhaps explore fields that they're interested in going into. And so, that's the purpose of the policy. But what I really want to point out is currently, our counseling department is having to handle the integration of students who are doing the V-Lax or applying to do internships and the like. And they're really overwhelmed with doing that. And so, this policy talks about having an individual who is kind of our extended learning kind of mentor.
Coordinator.
Coordinator, I guess is the term that's used. And the thought of a person like this is, one, it will unweight the counseling department, because their time is finite. And also, to have a person like this could really enhance opportunities, because this person would be able to explore the community, dig up opportunities for students, help students by talking about what has happened before. So, it's a real boost for the program. And I think to support this policy, inherent in that is supporting that we create that position on our staff. I don't think our counseling department could handle the load. They've expressed that. So, I just wanted to lay that out there, that this policy, without that individual, really is not going to achieve its objective.
Maria?
I think our counseling program is doing a great job, but I am committed to the new mental health program. And what they can't do is both that kind of counseling and this. So, I'd like to amend the motion that we approve the policy, and the amendment would be to direct the superintendent to put this position into the budget to show us.
So, you're amending the motion to?
Approve the policy, which was the motion, and to add that we direct the superintendent to put this position of a yellow coordinator into the budget.
Denise?
I would, I'll second the amendment, and then I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, my comment is simply that I totally agree with what both Kenny and Maria said as part of the policy committee. We really heard loud and clear that we, that there's a lot of concern if we were to approve this without having that position, that it would really completely, it would, first of all, it's going to open the door for more types of these opportunities, but that it truly would, like, the counseling department has just been able to kind of handle things, but it would really kind of completely overwhelm them if that was the case. So, yeah, I, you know, I heard that clearly. It's like, if we're not willing to put that position into the budget, then maybe we need to hold off on the policy. But what I also heard Dr. Morse talk to us about in committee is that that's really only going to hold things off a little tiny bit, because it's coming. It's, that is kind of the wave and where it's coming. So, anyway.
Dale?
Do we have a sense of what the impact to the budget would be if we were to pass this?
Well, I mean, it most likely is going to be a professional position. When you talk about a professional position, you're looking at salary and benefits that would approach $95,000. I would just want to add on to what Denise was saying, to give you a sense as a body, because the policy committee, of course, got this up close and personal, is currently, in this high school, we have over 120 students taking college courses. That is an amazing number of kids who are already seeking, you know, a learning experience that goes beyond the walls of our high school. The reason that this policy was so critical was because we needed to have a policy to guide the school counseling department at the high school. We had an old policy that was one of those policies where the kids would have to go through 16 or 17 hoops just to get a maybe. And what this policy does with its R document is create a very clear pathway for youngsters who want to take courses at UNH, at Great Bay, through dual enrollment, any opportunities that they have to provide the counseling department and potentially this coordinator, the guidance as to how that would grow. So, you know, if we go back to the five years ago, when we first started working together, we maybe had a dozen kids participating in college options. Now, we have over 120 kids. And this policy would open the floodgates even further. So, as I've said, just speaking about college courses, that's not talking about internships, job shadowing, or V-Lax. This is a, this is something that our kids are showing us they want. This is something our parents are showing us they want, and they're signing up for these courses without a guiding policy. So, it's just important that we have a policy that helps the school counseling department work through this conundrum.
Sarah, then?
I totally get the need to, if you're going to approve this policy, the need to put that position in. I totally, I definitely see the need in an ELO policy. I guess not being on the policy committee, and this being such a huge, I mean, this is a really important policy. And this is, I've heard about it from, you know, I haven't heard about it. So, other than my reading it, I have a hard time voting on it based on the fact that I don't know the history of the work that was done to come up with this policy. I know there are, there's a, you know, there are ELO coordinators around that have a network, have we, that are being very successful in their work with ELOs at their different schools. And I'm wondering, have we looked at those schools' policies that are being so successful? Because I'm looking at the list, and particularly, I think you're going to, it's looking to me like, they tend to be really big schools that have to find a way to provide lots of variety.
Yeah.
So, you know, have we, have we looked at those policies specifically? Have we looked at, have we looked at Maria's five schools, comparison schools?
Yes, so, we did do that. I can say that Mark Miliken and I attend the ELON Network meetings regularly. They happen once a month. We started doing that last year. In addition, the policy that we used is based on a couple different schools, primarily one school in particular. But we did use, schools with successful ELO programs to model our policy after. And the one distinction that all of those schools had was an ELO coordinator. So, in order to have a program that fully uses competencies, is rigorous, and meets the state standards fully, you need somebody to manage that.
And then I would ask as well, I mean, this has implications for the current staff that we have, because if you have all these kids taking ELOs, you know, that's taking kids out of current, currently staffed positions, you know, classes. And so, then I say, okay, so what happens on that end of things?
Yep.
You know, we have that situation in a few cases where kids are taking V-Lax with courses that we offer here. And those are very disturbing to me for lots of reasons. But, you know, what happens in those situations? Because then we're reducing our classes.
So, so far, Sarah, the answer to that is that there haven't been enough kids who have participated in these courses to warrant any adjustment in staff. But once this policy is in place, I suspect we will, I predict, we'll have many, many more students who want to participate in these opportunities. And, you know, the answer that I would give you is the same answer I gave the policy committee and also Todd and Heather in my past experience doing this work in Oakland. We used, no staff ever lost their job, because we use them to remediate kids who are struggling, RTI models, advancing kids, monitoring, helping to monitor kids who are taking V-Lax courses or these college courses. Because one of the things that we all know is, it takes a very dedicated student to step out of the tradition of the high school model. And those kids, surprisingly, to many, need support to be successful. And even if it's just a touch-based person in the high school. So, I don't ever think that this will replace the high school, but I think that the option is that we try, going back to a Maria comment from every budget year, we can't be all things to all people. And all of these courses are existing already. So, if we can redirect our students to those courses and use our staff to help kids who are struggling, and most of the kids will stay here, and then use our staff to help monitor these other kids, I think we use our staff differently. It'd be more like a college model, if you will. And the way the policy is written, no student could take all of their courses through this vehicle. It's really set up so that about the most that somebody could take would be like one-third of their high school courses, as opposed to 100% off-campus. So, it's a very well-crafted policy, and the staff would be used wisely.
I'd just like to raise a question that I'm a bit uncomfortable about taking one position and approving it now, when we don't see all the other positions that are being, I mean, normally, we have a more disciplined process of seeing what all the positions are, which ones rise to the top. I think there's a need for this position, but there may be need for other positions, which we are, we've not entered that discussion yet. So, whether, you know, in a policy discussion, we're going to make a decision to put some, a position in the budget, it just seems, that hasn't, that hasn't been how we've worked in the past. So, maybe you folks are fine with that. But I mean, I think, I would personally like to say, okay, what, what are the positions that the district, new positions the district is asking for? Is, does this, what priority would we give to this one? And that's, that's a disciplined process, as opposed to just plucking one position off in a policy discussion and saying, "We're going to, we want to put this in the budget."
It's just first read, by the way.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree. First of all, we aren't approving the policy. It's first read. This is prema, I have no problem with the position, but the budget meeting is next week, where they're going to explain everything. To approve a position before the budget meeting is like premature. So, and we aren't even approving the policy anyway. It's just the first read of the policy. It still has to go through a second read process. So, before we approve a $95,000 position on the fly, let's do the budget meeting first. So before we approve a $95,000 position on the fly, let's do the budget meeting first, hear how everyone fits together, hear a comprehensive plan of what this is rather than me just, or any of us reading this, to flush it out, and then we can make a decision. But it is, I think it's really premature to do this.
Kenny?
One thing I wanted to point out too is this policy was geared to take effect starting the next academic year. It was not going to start immediately, so people should know that. We thought this would start with the school year 2017. But then to speak to the points just raised, I, I, I get what you're saying, but I feel that we, when we have a budget presented, not only are we able to request that things be added, but we're able to request that things be removed. And my feeling if we support this policy, we are supporting that position, and I think we should see the budget with that position not on a yellow sheet being competitive with other sorts of wants or needs. But I think our approving this really elevates that spot to saying, we're supporting this, and the only way this works is having that position. So I, I think the two go hand in hand. So although maybe it is a little bit different than, than norm, we're not using, usually approving policies that imply that we're going to have a position in line in the budget. So I, I think we should, I, I agree with Maria in her motion.
Okay, Maria?
It wasn't long ago that we were all extremely proud of being the first school in the first state in the country of adopting the changing direction model. And I heard from many, or some parents, that the guidance department is so busy with the V-Lax and the extended learning stuff and getting kids into college and applications and all that stuff, that I don't think we can accept our pride in the changing direction unless we commit as soon as possible, like tonight, to that position that would open up the possibility of really doing great work in mental health. We need our guidance department, our counseling department to have the time in the effort to deal with those issues as well. So there is my motion.
Troy, did you have something?
I don't know. I, I didn't see the policy because I don't, I'm not on any of that. But I was just wondering, because I'm, I have taken on an independent research study that I've kind of designed myself, and I'm doing that. And I'm wondering if, if like the ELO person would be something that I would, if I was to do this next year, if that would be included in this? I don't know if that's just because I, you know, I mean, it's not a huge.
So Troy, that would be an example of somebody being able to coordinate that with you.
All right. Because we didn't mention it, and I just, just wanted to make sure.
All right.
I feel like at this point, I'm, I understand the need for the, the position, and I think it's critical. And I think it, you know, in terms of our commitment to change direction in Hampshire, it's critical. I would just feel a great deal more comfortable having more understanding of the proposed budget, requests for other positions, before I approve a new position. And I, you know, I, I am inclined to support the new position, but I just don't feel comfortable doing it out of the context of knowing what else we need.
Denise?
So I'm wondering if we not only should withdraw the, the amendment, but just even withdraw the approval for first read? Or, because I'm hearing what people say, and I, I totally respect that, you know, you want to see, I'm just, we just heard really loud and clear that we don't want to approve this and then say, oh, guess what, you're not having your position. So I just don't want to get caught in that situation. It is true, as Al said, this is only first read, so, you know, I guess we could say, okay, we'll approve it for first read.
Yeah.
Go to the budget committee, I mean, the budget workshop next week, hear everything out, you know, and, and then be able to know when it comes to second read what we're going to do. So I, you know, I would be okay with that.
How would you feel about that, Maria? Would you still rather have a vote on your amendment?
I have a hard time withdrawing it. Can I have this position on a pink sheet? So it's.
Yeah, yeah. It, it is already on a yellow sheet for your consideration next week. Oh, you want it pink? You would be literal. You want it in pink. We will gladly put it in pink for you, Maria.
It's on a pink sheet.
Okay.
So that it's different from all the other.
Okay. I think, I don't know, we need a motion on color.
No, but Heather will remind me it has to be pink, I'm sure.
I won't withdraw until I have a pink sheet.
Okay. I think Dr. Morse's word is good on that, so. So would you withdraw the motion then, the amendment?
Yes.
And I'll, yeah, and I was the second, so I will.
Okay. So we have, I think we have a motion on the floor to approve this as first read. So are we ready to vote on that? Are we ready?
Yeah, I'm gonna, just quick discussion. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote yes on that. There's a lot in here for me that I feel like I need. Maybe Heather or Suzanne, one of you would meet with me and sort of talk with me about some of the history of the decisions behind this. Because I think this is a huge policy.
It is.
And a very important policy as far as what we do as a board and as a school district. And so I'd like a better understanding.
Okay. But the motion is still to approve it on first read. So are you ready, are we okay to vote on that? All those in favor of approving alternative learning plan for first read, raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, all those opposed? One opposed. Okay, it's approved for first read. Graduate, let's see, so graduation, was that also the other one we pulled?
Graduation, yep.
Okay. I don't know who pulled that, or do you want, so we want to talk about that?
I did.
It was IKF, Sarah?
Yep.
Fifteen.
Oh, wait, there it is. Okay. Yeah, I guess I had this one pulled because I, again, I, I just feel, even looking at the minutes, I don't have a really good sense of where this policy came from, who we, who, who else we looked at, whether, you know, why, why we, we have what we have? Why do we need each of the credits that we have? And is this comparable to other districts, not comparable to other districts? Have we, you know, have we taken feedback of both faculty and student? I just, again, huge, I just think it's a very important policy, and I'm looking for that information.
Just a question, as Todd, my understanding is the state requires 20. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, where, where do, just, where do we require more than the state? If you look to, to these?
We have a half of a credit additional of physical education.
Okay.
We have a half, Heather, half a credit of social studies, correct? And where's the other credit? Just additional elective? Yeah, so half a credit of PE, half a credit of social studies, and one extra elective.
Okay.
And I, and Heather, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but we also tried to make, many of our kids go after the New Hampshire Scholars designation, and this is in line with the New Hampshire Scholars concept, which about 75% of our kids pursue.
Okay.
And then.
Denise?
And I'll just mention that the, the red, the 14 of the 22 must be achieved, that came directly out of the discussion that Dr. Morse was just referring to in terms of, you know, not wanting to see a student say, okay, I'm going to do all ELOs and now give me an Oyster River diploma that, you know, that we want. It's just like you have a residency for college, you know, on policy committee. We discussed how it's important to have basically a residency for Oyster River in order to gain an Oyster River diploma. And so that's, that's where that came from, that 14 of the 22 must be achieved in ORCSD courses.
Just a question, what if somebody transfers in and have like, is that both?
So it's covered by state law if they transfer in.
Okay.
Yep.
And of the kids who are taking ELOs, what, or, let's look at the kids who graduate, what percentage of the kids that graduate are graduating with that percentage now? The 14 out of 22 credits?
Very few.
Almost, very few. There's, there's a very few kids who have alternative learning plans because of some specific issue that, that may accumulate more than, than that. The 90, 95% or more are maybe doing a couple of those experiences over the course of their time. Most kids that are tapping into this, it's their senior year, they're either doing a course at college, they're doing an internship somewhere, they're doing an independent study because they've maxed out all of the art classes or things that we have, and they want to continue to have something in their life that they're passionate about.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, I mean, that seems like a big proportion to me, and I'm concerned about losing, about Oyster River losing control of, of the caliber, the quality of course that people choose to take.
I think.
Which not to beat a dead horse brings us right back to the coordinator position.
Exactly. And what we talked about, the rigor of these and the whole process of applying for acceptance, evaluating them, and then measuring, did the student meet the objective? So the, the rigor is there, and that person really is there to, to ride herd over that.
And also utilizing a certified teacher or a highly qualified teacher in the various subject areas to make sure that the standards aren't being reduced.
I had a question, like highly qualified.
That's going away.
Is that thrown away?
Yeah, actually, yeah, but the SS say that HQT is gone, so.
Okay.
Just certified is really what we're talking about.
Okay, got it. Got it. So I'm sorry, do we have a motion to approve this in first read? I don't think we do, do we?
No, there isn't, but I will make it up. I move that we approve policy IKF graduation requirements.
On first read. Is there a second, second by Maria? Is there further discussion on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor.
No, six.
Six in favor, all those opposed? One opposed. So the motion, the policy is approved for first read. So I think that takes care of our actions. School board committee updates.
Oh.
Denise?
Oh, yeah. So Long Range Planning Committee met, and we basically talked about trying to get a better feel for the partition between Mastway and Mohairamet, which continues to be kind of a challenge. Just decided, the committee decided to go with a three-year average for kindergarten instead of a five-year average. And, you know, basically just continuing to tweak the formula to get it as accurate as possible. Although when you look at overall, yes, we, there were kind of a couple areas that were kind of misses, but when you look at the overall, it's within the 1%. So I think the work that the committee does, you know, I'm just always very impressed when they come up, you know, tweak the formulas and do what they need to do to kind of give what is largely a pretty accurate projection, you know? And, and this year was particularly difficult with the, you know, first year of full decay in terms of how that was going to come down. So, yeah, so that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Other committees? No? Maria?
I wanted to report, just, I know, it's not a committee, but in 68 Hours of Hunger, which is doing a fabulous job, and I'm not taking any credit at all. There are some amazing people in this community that has worked on this on a weekly, daily basis. And there has been some fabulous food drives, which is great. It involves quite a bit of work on our volunteers. You have to go through the food, and it doesn't always meet the, we want to give 3,000 calories for the weekend, and can't be outdated and whatever. So what I really need and want is money so that we can buy in supplements so that we get the right mix. And you can send your check to Oyster River and 68 Hours of Hunger to the central office, which is located at?
36 Code Drive.
Yes.
03824.
So just, come on, you can do it. Send us some money.
Other closing public comments?
Hi, I'm Dean Vine from Lee. I want to thank the board and congratulate the board for approving the later start time. I really hope my kids will benefit, and I'm sure many kids throughout the district will for many years. I would suggest at this point that we make some effort to survey the students before, to actually try to find out if, if it's having the effect. We hope, we hope it does. So we do it before, and then we do it after or during, and we find out. And I think what came up tonight is maybe we should ask about caffeine and also prescription stimulants, which seem to be out there and keeping our kids up. That's all I got. Hey, thanks again.
Other public comment?
Just briefly, I want to say thank you for approving the later start time. And I think this, there'll be a ripple effect. You know, we look to Fairfax County, we look to these big school districts that have made a change, and New Hampshire will look to us. And, and so there's many, many lives beyond our school district who I think you will affect. So thank you for starting this here.
And I'll be quick, but we wanted to stay to the end to really say thank you. And I have to say, it's been a pleasure to be a part of this process and watching the way the board has worked together. You know, it really sets a good example for how we take on, you know, complicated issues. So thank you so much.
And thank you for all the work you've done.
I'll also be brief. I just wanted to thank Troy specifically for all of the work you've done to advocate for the students. I know they value being heard, and I hope to continue to do that and bring back that valuable perspective of the other things going on.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Future meetings are listed here. I will not be here for the, the next regular meeting, so Denise will be running that. I'll be in Atlanta, Georgia, so Denise will be running that. So, so I won't run through all these because you can read them yourselves. So I think we're ready to adjourn. Maria?
I move to adjourn.
Moved by Maria. Second by Al. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Student rep in favor, we're adjourned.